Order the May 7th, 2024 Stanley County Board of Education meeting. Welcome to those of you in attendance and to those of you watching via livestream tonight. We appreciate you being here and we appreciate your support of Stanley County Schools. I would like to draw your attention to the flowers placed on the dais tonight in remembrance of a student we recently lost from Alamo High School, James Watkins, and also in remembrance of Mr. Lee Pennington, husband of the principal, Ms. Beverly Pennington at Alamo High School. If you would please join me for a moment of silence in remembrance of those that we have lost. Thank you. I'm now going to call on Ms. Robin Whitaker for the invocation and pledge.
We have had definitely some sadness in our school system this week, but there's a lot of good things that have gone on too with it being Teacher Appreciation Week. So this prayer is really in honor of all those teachers, if you'll bow your heads. Dear Lord, we thank you today for all of our teachers and our educators. Lord, for those who have dedicated their lives to educating our students. We thank you for the ways that they inspire us, that they motivate us, that they challenge us, and they guide us. We pray especially that you will bless our teachers with help and with grace and that you will fill them daily with encouragement by showing them specific ways that their teaching efforts are making a difference in our students in our county. Lord, we ask you to keep their classrooms safe, to keep them away from harm's way, and Lord, to give them the resources and the teaching tools that they need to do their jobs well. We provide, we ask you to provide a time of rest for them and renewal for them. Lord bless their health, their home, their families, and their spirits. We ask you to nurture their faith and, Lord, that they will prosper in the work that they do for us. We ask all this in your name. Please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend the agenda, please.
I just need a motion from you if you'd like to do that.
I'll move to amend the agenda to add our resolution to request funding for capital projects behind Part B, the Holocaust class.
Okay, I have a motion to amend the agenda to add the resolution following the South Stanley Holocaust Literature Class presentation.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I appreciate the floor for two seconds.
Sure.
I just want to go ahead and state I'm going to oppose this motion. I'm okay with new schools, I'm okay with strategic consolidation. I'm not okay with the specifics that we've developed in the past. So with all due respect to the board members, I'm going to oppose.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, I will now entertain a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are you good, Hope? Okay, all right. Next on our agenda is the presentation for Ms. Meredith Howell and the Holocaust Literature Class. Thank you.
Do I need to make this closer? Okay, all right. Good evening, how are you guys? So this, these are students who were in my Holocaust Literature elective last year as well as this year. So we have representation from both semesters. I am going to try to keep this very, very short and sweet. I know that I've presented last spring at this time, but I wanted to say that this year we've kind of upped our game, I guess. I don't really want to say upped our game, but out of reverence. But we have really expanded what we're doing in our Holocaust Literature elective. And this is also Holocaust Remembrance Week. Yesterday was Yom HaShoah, and I thought that it would be fitting for you guys to come here for our students. So the first thing that I wanted to say is we recently took, we were asked to bring our students to the North Carolina Commemoration, Holocaust Commemoration held with DPI. And I just wanted to show you guys this. There it is, perfect. All right, so we were able, we were invited to come show our SHU projects that we did last year. And our students who did that last year are here. And then our students who are from this year are getting ready to begin that process. And we're going to work to highlight even more North Carolina survivors or survivors who call North Carolina their home. We were able to meet Catherine Truitt, our state superintendent. She spoke with several of them about their projects, which was awesome, just to see leadership from our school system at the state level. So I was really, really proud to represent. Another thing is we were able to work with the chairman of the North Carolina Council on the Holocaust. This is Mike Abramson in the pictures here. He is teaching about Jewish tradition in reverence to the many Jewish lives who were, who were lost during the Holocaust. And they were able to understand a little bit about Jewish tradition there. The other thing that I wanted to highlight at the state level really quickly was that we have recently been asked by the editor of the North Carolina Council on the Holocaust Newsletter to have my students write several articles to go in the newsletter. So I have two who are, who have committed to the June publication. And then I have two more, one of them is here tonight, who will be writing for the subsequent publication, which will come out in the fall. And so I just wanted to point out the good things that are going on with that. And then now I'm going to invite the kids to come up and talk with you guys.
Hello, my name is Eli Thompson, and I was a part of the first Holocaust Literature Class. Since last year when I came here to speak, I have been able to further my knowledge on the Holocaust by staying close with Ms. Howell as a student. And I was recently given the opportunity to go to the North Carolina Holocaust Commemoration. This is the first time that I was able to perform academically at a state level. And it's pretty cool because we were some of the only students given the chance to. It was a great opportunity for me because I was forced to step out of my comfort zone. But it was great because it allowed me to surround myself with people who are very knowledgeable on the Holocaust. Experiences like the commemoration and our trip last year to Washington DC are the ones that really stick with me, but they would mean nothing without the class itself. My Holocaust Commemoration, my Holocaust Literature Class has shaped me into a completely different person because it allowed me to develop morals and new ideas and personality traits that I never even knew I had. It taught me lessons that were deeper than those from standard classes, and I really think that they're more important. I think it'd be great if more students were given the opportunity to become familiar with the Holocaust so they too can change, just like me. This class does a lot more than just teaching you the basics of the Holocaust. It gives you new ideas and impacts you like no other class could. Therefore, I think a second class would be even more beneficial, especially to someone like me who wants to spread Holocaust awareness throughout the county and maybe even the world. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Catherine Cubbles. I'm a junior at South Stanley High School and had the privilege of taking Ms. Howell's Holocaust Literature Class in 2023. When I first saw this class on my schedule, I viewed it as every other course I had to take. But after just a few weeks, it began to teach me about the hate towards diverse groups and separation caused by this hate worldwide. This class also taught me the importance in taking action against this hate and that being a bystander is just as harmful as being a perpetrator. This course provided opportunities which go beyond the class. I'd explained this class as an interactive discussion where we would look beyond the surface with each assignment. Therefore, we as a class became closer to each other and felt more comfortable sharing our opinions. We, we had opportunities to speak with experts about certain topics and listen to survivors' testimonies. We also took a four-day trip to Washington DC in which we visited the Holocaust Museum as well as traveling to different monuments in other educational locations. April 28th, we visited the NC Holocaust Commemoration to prevent our Commemorative SHU project, which represents the life of individuals who were affected by the Holocaust. These opportunities pushed me to want to help others learn more than just a world history lesson of the Holocaust, which is why a Holocaust II class would be beneficial. It would allow students to recognize the hate worldwide, learn the importance of taking action, and teach newer generations to never forget nor allow events from the past to happen again. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Samantha Hinchsliff. I believe this class has been beneficial to teaching people that the Holocaust was its own thing, as most think that it happened just during World War II. It has also been important in teaching me personal lessons, evaluating people and things in my life that I take for granted. Ms. Howell's teaching is structured in a way not many teachers care about. She cares about not just teaching us dates and names and important events, but how to take all of these things and direct them in our life and how we can do things to make change to the world. She teaches us that choose, choices we make are important. Ms. Howell cares very much about her students, and it shows every day in class. I believe it's a necessary course to keep due to the fact that I personally have learned more in that class than I have in any of my other 31 courses in high school. I think that we should keep, kids should take this class to help further their education in a meaningful manner.
Good evening, I'm Gabriel Neal. I am a member of the current Holocaust Literature Class at South Stanley High School. That, that class has given me multiple opportunities that seldom, if ever, are provided in other classes. I can only mention one other class where I had guest speakers. That would be the accounting class. And those guest speakers were not nearly as significant as I can say these ones were. The guest speakers that have been in our class have been able to provide our, me and my fellow students with in-depth perspectives of the Holocaust. And they have survivors, or the children of survivors, and people who have spent their lives studying the Holocaust and having myriad of information on that subject. It has also provided me with the opportunity of, in the past few weeks, going to DC. We went to DC a few weeks ago, and we were gone for four days. And as was mentioned before by the other students, we saw the Holocaust Memorial Museum and other monuments and educational things of that nature. And I would like to see the continuation of this course so that I have the opportunity of seeing even more perspectives through other guest speakers. And that's it, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lindy Dees, and I'm currently in the Holocaust Literature Class. Before I started the class, the only thing I knew about the Holocaust was Anne Frank's Diary and that Hitler was the one who started the Holocaust. Now that I've taken the class, I see that there's so much more to it and there's so much more for me to learn about it. Thanks to this class, I know about the Pyramid of Hate, antisemitism, propaganda, Kristallnacht, the Final Solution, and so much more. I had never heard of any of these things before I took this class. It's important for us to have this class at South Stanley so people have more information about the topic and furthermore to spread how to stand up against hate. I feel like adding a Holocaust literature to it would be a great addition to South Stanley so we can learn more about the Holocaust and continue spreading awareness on how to stand up against hate. I feel like this is a really good topic for kids who really deal with, having to deal with hate and seeing that this, it can be changed and people can stand up for it if you really try. Thank you.
I don't know how we are on time, but I just wanted to say thank you guys for letting them come speak. Just, just to reiterate, we are really, really, I guess, honored to be able to stand up here and, and just remember those who, who lost their lives during the Holocaust. So we appreciate you guys and appreciate them. Thank you.
Thank you. If they'll just come by and shake their hands. Guys, if you'll just lean over and congratulate them, we'll do that real quick. Ms. Howell, I think Hope wants to get a picture of you and your students real quick. I just want to say thank you to Ms. Howell and her class as they're getting this picture made. We really appreciate you guys coming in and speaking to us about the class tonight. And I know I was able to attend in Raleigh, and it was just a great time getting to see the kids talk about their projects at that level. So thank you, Ms. Howell, thank you. Thanks, guys. Next on our agenda tonight are some recognitions, and I want to start with... Oh, I'm sorry. We amended the agenda to add the resolution. Um, next on the agenda is the resolution. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dennis so he can read this for us, thank you.
I'm reading the record, the resolution requesting funding for capital projects 2024. Whereas the Stanley County Board of Education, further known as the Board, has determined and found that both renovations and replace, to and replacements of existing school facilities are needed to meet the needs of our current and future student population. And whereas North Carolina counties are charged with building, equipping, and maintaining school facilities, under General Statute 105(c)(4A) subsection B stipulates that public school facilities requirements will be met by county governments. And whereas North Carolina counties are designated statutorily as the local taxing authorities for independently elected school boards, meaning the Board of County Commissioners is a tax levying authority on behalf of the local school administrative unit. And whereas the Board has determined that facility improvements and replacement are necessary at existing schools to assure that those facilities remain safe and healthy for students and staff and will continue to support instructional programs that promote academic excellence for all students. And whereas the Stanley County Board of Education staff and Stanley County Government staff have collaborated on and have contracted past facility studies and population forecasts for use and determining facilities' needs. And whereas many of our schools are aging with deteriorating infrastructure that poses safety hazards and fails to meet modern standards for educational environments. Renovation and maintenance efforts can only address these issues to a limited extent, and a comprehensive solution is required. And whereas by investing in new school construction, Stanley County Schools can address current facilities issues and lay the foundation for a brighter future for our children. A modern, well-equipped school environment fosters a conducive learning atmosphere, empowers educators to deliver high-quality instruction, and ensures that every student has the opportunity to thrive academically and socially. And whereas the Board has created a facilities construction plan, which includes the purchase of land if needed, construction of new schools, expansion and improvements to existing schools, repairs to existing schools, and consideration of professional services and the advanced planning phases. And whereas the Board will pursue funding options such as needs-based grants through the state that FSU could fund up to $42 million for elementary school construction, $52 million for middle school construction, and $62 million for high school construction with a 5% county match. And whereas the Board of Commissioners has various options in how to provide funds to provide the additional amounts requested, including without limitation, different loan options, the calling of a bond referendum to authorize the issuance of general obligation loans, the issuance of limited obligation loans, the issuance of bonds, anticipation notes, and anticipation of the issuance of general obligation bonds or limited obligation bonds, and funding a portion of the cost on a pay-as-you-go basis, and also has various options for the timing of such actions to meet appropriations. We therefore resolve the Board hereby requesting the Board of Commissioners for the county of Stanley, North Carolina, to take all necessary steps by the issuance of bonds or otherwise to provide funds for the school system's capital building and project needs. Stanley County Board of Education resolved this 7th of May, 2024.
Okay, board members, the resolution has been read.
I move we go ahead and approve this resolution.
I have a motion to approve.
Second. Second.
A second by a couple of board members, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this has passed. Thank you. Now we have recognition, sorry about that, y'all. Up next is recognitions, and I want to, these students aren't here tonight. We actually recognized them last night. But I want to start by calling the names of the CTE students that we had the reception for. These students will represent the state of North Carolina in the Skills USA National Competition in Atlanta, Georgia in June. They all attend West Stanley High School, and I hope I say these names correct. I have Brianna Long for First Aid and CPR, Talon Yao for Technical Drafting, Hadley Herring for Baking and Pastry Arts, and Claire Sherrill as a state officer. I just wanted to congratulate those and wish them the best of luck at the state, at the national competition, representing the state of North Carolina. Now I'll turn it over to Dr. Dennis.
If I could get the agenda for recognitions? I have mine, but I think it might be a different order than the one on computer. All right, first, yeah, mine was a little out of order. First, the 2024 District Spelling Bee winner, and I'm going to call Mr. Lynn Plummer up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. On February 29th, we held our District Spelling Bee. Thank you, Ms. Watson and Dr. Lefler, for being there to join us. Fifteen elementary and middle school spelling bee champions from the schools joined us for the District Spelling Bee. Three students among the group were back to compete again this year. After 22 rounds of competition, we found our winner. If you need help writing this sentence, you can call on the champion. "Simultaneously, with pending aptitude, she confidently expanded her vocabulary expressing appreciation for the contemptible dynasty's bionic advancements, exploring Brooklyn's boba scene and studying photosynthesis in Copenhagen, all while delving into the innards of thyroid and lymphoma and marveling at the lanthanides' role in the hippocost minimus." Don't ask me what it means, but he can spell it. He won with the correct spelling of hippocost. Please join me in congratulating Stanley County Schools 2023-2024 Spelling Bee, C-H-A-M-P-I-O-N, fifth grade student from Baden Elementary School, Hank Nelson.
And Dr. Dennis, if you'll just have all of our award winners wait, we'll have them all come up at the very end. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I would like to call up Dr. Carter to recognize our Stanley Stars.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Each month, Stanley County Schools is proud to recognize two classified and two certified employees through the Stanley Stars Awards Program. The employees were nominated by their principals, who also shared a brief overview of why they were nominated. And this month, we recognized the Stanley Stars at Richfield Elementary School and West Stanley High School. These employees were surprised by a visit from Dr. Dennis and were given a $25 gift card sponsored by the NEOMI Project. And we'd like to thank the NEOMI Project for their renewed donation of $1,500 for the upcoming school year. So thank you. As I call your names, Stanley Stars, please step forward with your principal. At Richfield Elementary School, our Stanley Stars are Heather Fitz, classified, and Jessica Boland, certified. Principal Davis wrote the following about Heather Fitz. "Stanley Stars is awarded to none other than our hard-working teacher assistant, Ms. Fitz. Ms. Fitz has consistently gone above and beyond in supporting our teachers and students, always bringing positivity to her work. Her willingness to lend a helping hand, her creativity in coming up with new educational activities, and her unwavering commitment to the success of our students truly sets her apart. We are incredibly grateful for Ms. Fitz's outstanding contributions to our school community, and we congratulate her on this well-deserved recognition." She writes, Ms. Davis writes about Ms. Boland. "The Stanley Stars Awards goes to our exceptional curriculum coach, Jessica Boland. Her unwavering dedication to supporting teachers and effectively managing the MTSS processes has truly made a significant impact on our school community. Thank you for your outstanding commitment to excellence and continuous support in fostering a positive learning environment for all." Congratulations to our Stanley Stars at Richfield Elementary School. At West Stanley High School, our Stanley Stars are Andy Shutt and Dana Burleson. Principal Rhodes wrote the following. Classified Andy Shutt. Ms. Shutt is our West Stanley High School, is at West Stanley High School this year to serve as a teacher assistant in our OCS classroom. She has been a phenomenal addition to the EC team. She provides structure in the classroom that assists our incoming freshmen in navigating the transition of the high school. Ms. Shutt makes sure that each student in her classes is actively engaged in making progress on their goals. We are lucky to have her. And Mr. Rhodes wrote the following about Ms. Burleson. "Mrs. Burleson does a wonderful job as the EC Department Chair. Her coworkers have this to say about her. Dana is fantastic. She is a great co-teacher and always dependable. She keeps her students that have IEPs in check, but always helps the regular ed students too. She is able to teach concepts when needed. She pulls students out and works with them one-on-one. She, she works to build relationships with all students so that they are comfortable asking questions. Students have said they look at her as one of their moms at school, and they do like that." Congratulations to our West Stanley Stars, West Stanley Stars, so congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Next, Beginning Teacher of the Year, and I'm going to call up Ms. Debbie Rolls.
Good evening, Madam Chair, chair, board members and guests. This evening, we are excited to celebrate Stanley County Schools 2024 Beginning Teacher of the Year, Ms. Bella Dobbins, a kindergarten teacher at Stanfield Elementary. Ms. Meredith shares about, the following about our winner. "Ms. Dobbins provides engaging instruction at the level of experienced teachers. She has built relationships with her students, the parents, and the community. She goes above and beyond to help meet school goals. Her classroom practices and work ethic truly reflect what an outstanding beginning teacher truly is." Congratulations, Ms. Dobbins.
CTE Teacher of the Year is next, Ms. Mandy Melton, if you'll come up.
Good evening, tonight we recognize the CTE Teacher of the Year. It is Stephen Honeycutt from West Stanley High School. He is our masonry instructor and our Skills USA advisor. Over the past two years, Stephen has worked endlessly and tirelessly to rebuild Skills USA after COVID, and it shows. Chairwoman Poplin stated, "We have four students, all from West Stanley, that will be representing the state of North Carolina at the national competition in Atlanta in June, and a lot of that is due to Stephen." We also have to spend a minute to shout out, Stephen helped us have our very first crime scene investigation team that competed at Skills USA. They did not place how they wanted to this year, but I think, Mr. Honeycutt, you told them and they told you they would be back next year. So thank you for all you do for CTE, Mr. Honeycutt, we appreciate you.
Next, we'd like to recognize Teacher of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, and Principal of the Year.
Tonight, we are proud to present the Teacher of the Year from each school and also recognize the three outstanding leaders who have been selected to represent Stanley County Schools as the District Teacher of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, and Stanley County Schools Principal of the Year. All of these individuals were celebrated as, at a special event on May 2nd at Ms. Watson's venue. Some of the honorees were unable to attend this evening. However, honorees, as I call your name, if you're with us, please come up front and wait until all the names have been called as we extend congratulations and gratitude to each of these extraordinary individuals. Our 2023-2024 Teachers of the Year are Doug Talbert from Alamo High School, Holly Lyttaker, Alamo Middle School, Carolyn Smith, Aquadale Elementary School, Samantha Hogan, Baden Elementary School, Brandy Boho, Bohole Central Elementary School, Jamie Whitley, East Elementary School, Julie Griffith, Indy Elementary School, Jeff Little, Locust Elementary School, Tiffany Holbert, Millenport Elementary School, Ron George, North Stanley High School, Toby Karns, North Stanley Middle School, Antoinette Baldwin, Norwood Elementary School, Rebecca Crisco, Oakbury STEM School, Melissa Brady, Richfield Elementary School, Billy Conte, South Stanley High School, Adam Smith, South Stanley Middle School, Jessica Dunn... Stanley Middle School, Jessica Dunn, Stanfield Elementary School, Serenity Smith, Stanley Early College High School, Melissa Terry, Stanley STEM Early College High School, Pat Simone, West Stanley High School, Julie Honeycutt, West Stanley Middle School. Congratulations to our school teachers of the year. The 2023-2024 Stanley County's Teacher of the Year, District Teacher of the Year, is Ronald George, North Stanley High School. Congratulations. The Stanley County Schools' Assistant Principal of the Year is Crystal Heron from West Stanley High School. And our 23-24 Stanley County School Principal of the Year, Mr. Rhodes, from West Stanley High School. This is a fine-looking bunch. Congratulations to each of you.
Thank you all so much. I hope it's going to get a picture real quick. Okay, and if you guys don't mind just kind of walking by, and we'll shake your hands from up here. Thank you. Next on our agenda tonight is public comment. We don't have anyone sign up to speak tonight, so we're going to move on to the next. The next thing is the consent agenda and the approval of minutes. Up tonight are the approval of the minutes from April 10th, 2024, the regular board meeting, April 15th, 2024, the special call board meeting, and April 16th, 2024 work session. These have been posted in board docs for your review, board members. If there are no objections or corrections, I will ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Next on the agenda are committee reports. I don't believe any committees have met since our last board meeting, and if that is correct, we will move on to our next item for the evening. As many know, we have a service we're trying to kind of get to tonight, so I'm going to try to sort of streamline some of this. Any committees need to say anything? Okay. Next up is curriculum instruction. Mr. Lynn Plummer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, just want to call your attention to some proposed bell time changes for the 2024-2025 school year, trying to streamline some things to help support some of our schools, but at the same time, helping Mr. Lambert and the transportation staff be able to conduct their business and make sure that we've got drivers in places that we need to get students to and from schools. So, that schedule you should have. To the left are our current bell times, to the right would be some proposed changes to support those efforts.
Sorry. Mr. Plummer, do you need us to take action on this tonight?
Yes, please.
All right, board members, you have had the proposed bell times in your board docs. Is there any discussion or comment or question for Mr. Plummer? I will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept and approve the 2024-2025 proposed school bell times.
I have a motion to accept the proposed school bell times for 2024-2025. And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This has passed. Thank you, Mr. Plummer. Next on our agenda is auxiliary services, and Mr. Keith Benton.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Education. I come to you tonight with the contract to be awarded for Indy Elementary, 10-classroom addition for JM Cope. It is a 350-day completion from the time the permits are issued to the contractor, in the amount of $3,982,000.
Okay. Board members, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Benton?
Mr. Benton, I know that, I know, once we approve things, are they ready to get started? Are they waiting till after the school year? When will this light take place?
Generally, we're going to try to wait till school is out because of moving the playground to moving it to another portion of the property just right above it. And once that takes place, then they'll be ready to go. The permits are just about completed, 100%, so they'll be able to pick those up, and then we'll move forward. So, we anticipate starting in June sometime.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? You need a motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion to approve the JM Cope contract.
I move that we approve the JM Cope contract for the addition onto Indy Elementary School.
I have a motion. And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This has passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Dennis, you're up with superintendent comments.
Yeah, I'll keep my comments succinct. I just wanted to go over a couple of dates, but before I do that, I just want to say that I did have the opportunity to go with Mr. Sorenson to his 10 Skills USA at the state level. And as always, I'm just extremely proud of our kids and how they conduct themselves, you know, how they perform in just every facet of what I saw was just, makes you proud that the kids come from Stanley County, and you know, we are Stanley County Schools. And Stanley County name come across the, I guess, the microphone a lot that night for all the kids who are placed, and you know, having the three students who are going to nationals and the officer as well, you know, just for our school system. It's, you know, it's just another feather in our cap. So, I enjoyed that. Dates I have, first of all, of course, it is Teacher Appreciation Week, which is the 6th to the 10th, and just can't thank our teachers enough for everything they do. I've seen several ways that our teachers are being supported and celebrated by their PTO or their schools, and it's good to see that, you know, here at the end, that they can have a week, so they can be recognized for everything that they do. School Principal Day was May the 1st, and Lunch, School Lunch Hero Day was May the 3rd. School Nurses Day is tomorrow, May the 8th. School Pathologist Day is May the 18th, and Memorial Day is May the 27th. Our last day of school, so we won't have another meeting, a regular meeting until then, is May the 22nd. Our graduation for the early colleges, the academy, SCove, are May the 23rd, and our traditional high schools will graduate on May 24th. Thank you.
Next is board member comment. Tonight, in lieu of all the board members making comment, I will be making a comment for the board. As I have stated before, we have a service that we were trying to attend for one of our staff members. The Board of Education would like to thank and congratulate all of our award winners tonight, from the students recognized in Raleigh to the Principal of the Year and all of those in between. Thank you. It's also Teacher Appreciation Week, and we are very appreciative and thankful for all of our teachers. The Board acknowledges it's a hectic time for staff and students finishing up the school year and getting prepared for testing. Students need to get good sleep and be prepared for your end-of-the-year testing and be able to perform at your best. Your teachers have put in hard work to prepare you, and now you all go in there and make Stanley County proud and do your very best. Tomorrow morning, the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners are going to have a joint meeting here in the Jean McIntyre Room at 8:30 a.m. We are going to have two items on that agenda, and those items are a budget presentation and long-range facility recommendations. Our next scheduled board meeting is, the date and time is June 4th, and it will be in the Jean McIntyre Room at 6:15. Next is the personnel agenda, so I'll call Dr. Carter.
Madam Chair, Board members, if I may call your attention to the personnel agenda. As always, section one is for your information only, and section two does require your action. So, at this time, I'm requesting your consideration and approval.
I will entertain a motion for section two.
I move we approve section two of the personnel agenda.
I have a motion. And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, this has passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, if there's nothing else, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, we are now adjourned. Thank you.